All right, we're going to call to order the special board meeting for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the supervisor's hearing room in Melody Lane in Bisbee, Arizona. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, the public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the computer or mobile app. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please return a speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. We will begin with a roll call. District One, Crosby is here. District Two,
Gomez is here. District Three, Antonori is here. All supervisors are present and in person. Before we get started and we do our call to the audience for speakers, I want to, I want to do just a quick summary of where we're at. So those of you in the audience, many of you are probably aware, the county settled the lawsuit between Dan Lechance et al versus Cochise County. Part of that settlement agreement was to redo the jail election to ensure that there was no disenfranchisement of any voters in the redo. So we are about to undergo that this November. The board passed a resolution with the specific ballot language. That is the ballot language that is going to appear on the ballot. So there's been some question or discussion about where the jail is going to be or what it's going to cost being on the ballot. That is not the case at all. That information will likely appear in the publicity pamphlet that will be sent out by the county, which will also include letters from taxpayers and voters within the county in support of or opposition to the ballot proposition. That will be mailed to every household where there is a registered voter. Is that correct, Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Cloud, our county recorder in the back. So that is the process that's going to occur. Why we're here tonight is we are seeking public comment to determine where would be the location that the county should consider citing the jail or placing the jail. A lot of factors go into that, including input from the public and the taxpayers and the voters of this county. There's costs associated with that. So we're looking at all those aspects. But tonight is to gain public inputs and insight from everybody in attendance here on what your opinion might be on where we should put this jail. So with that, I will give my, yep, I will give my colleagues an opportunity to add a comment and then we'll begin with the request to speak.
County administrators, Ms. Gilman, remember you sent an email requesting that we get the word out for people to be able to submit for and against for the publicity, right? Would you like to tell the audience exactly, I can't remember all the details you gave me, but I think it'd be good coming soon. Of course, Supervisor Gomez, members of the board, the publicity pamphlet, we have to have the option for pro and con arguments regarding the upcoming election that's in November. So we've put a public notice in the paper requesting those letters be sent to the clerk of the board. There is criteria for those letters, a 300-word, I think, limitation, and they have to be signed by the individual. They can't be anonymous. And as well as other criteria that are laid out in that public notice, and we'll also put that information on our website. The deadline for submission of pro and con arguments regarding the ballot question specifically for the half-cent sales tax is due August 6th. So please let people know on either side of the argument, they can submit those letters to the clerk of the board here at Melody Lane. And then are we going to have a summation? Are we going to have our comments after everyone speaks?
You'll have an opportunity to speak on the agenda item itself. But first, let's get a motion for agenda item number one, so that we can open up the floor to speakers. That goes.
I move that we approve to give on item number one, is it one and two?
Just one.
Just one?
Yep.
A move to give the opportunity for members of the public to provide input regarding the proposed location for the new Cochise County jail facility.
Second. All right. So we have a motion as seconded. We will begin with discussion. Part of that discussion will be public comment. So the first individual that is on our request to speak list is Mr. Richard C. Skinner. It's got Pete in parentheses. It's Mr. Skinner here. Ah, Mr. Skinner, man, you were in the pole position. You're not, you're not here? All right. Well, next.
He submitted a letter, right?
Yeah. All right. Next up, we have the mayor of Bisbee, Mayor Ken Budge, that would like to speak. Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, supervisors. Excuse me, I come before you as the mayor of City of Bisbee. I represent the citizens of the city that has been an integral part of the county seat, and we believe an essential to its most physical responsible future. I'm hoping I can go a little over with, over three minutes, because I think there's some very important things I'd like to speak in, for my constituents. I was present at your last meeting and listened carefully to your experts that you hired. They presented a compelling and professional analysis and concluded that the existing county seat in Bisbee is the optimal location for the new jail. I know we don't always like the experts have to say to us. We use them too, but we hire them for their objective data, data-driven guidance. And City of Bisbee fully concurs with their recommendations that it remain in Bisbee. I know there was a lot of back and forth about we're way down here in the big county and the blue dots should be more in the middle. And so I did some things with Google Maps, which will tell us exactly what travel time is. I left you a copy up there for you to say. But overall, what really is happening here is you're going to help a couple of communities a little bit, but you're going to hurt even more communities in the worst way. You'll save seven minutes from Sierra Vista to Tombstone versus coming here. You'll save 10 minutes from Wilcox to go to Tombstone versus here. But you're going to increase Douglas over 24 minutes. So right there wipes out any benefit those two communities have against them. And then, of course, Bisbee will be injured also. Benson will be helped. So it is just a matter of, overall, when you figure those five major communities, you're going to lose seven minutes in the travel time. And I haven't even considered the sheriffs. The sheriffs are all over the county, and so it pretty well works its way out. Just depends where they're coming from. But, but I don't think, I think that's kind of a red herring as far as where it's at. But I didn't want to bring that up. So moving on, there, we really need to get the costs. And to me, that's, you know, I end up a little bit, we just build a $4 million city hall. And it's already been established that the most current location is the most efficient. And really, why is that? I know Bisbee has some topographical issues because it's, we're in the hilly side over here. But when you consider everything that's happened, moving dirt, or basically called site development, it's a molehill compared to what, what happened with new acquisitions of roads and establishing all new utility systems. So I wanted to hit your utility systems. We do own a sewer system. You guys don't really get into, into utilities, but I'm telling you, it hit it.
We're building a pipeline for you all the way to the other side of the San Pedro River. We're going to buy your affluent from you. Right. So we, we do get into that. Well, that's, that's a little, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's, I understand. But like a water system or sewer system, it keeps on, I mean, let alone, we spend over a million dollars a year just to manage it, because it has to be managed 24/7. It doesn't ever stop flowing. And electricity alone is $90,000 a year that we pay just for electricity to run the system. Yeah, we're a bigger system, but even going down smaller, you're still going to have a lot of, a lot of expenses in that. And really, the Tombstone site would require a brand-new plant. It'd be subject to lengthy and unpredictable ADEQ permitting processes. I don't know if you thought about that one, but ADEQ is not always the easiest ones to get along with. Though, and we are always under the gun of where is the effluent going to be released? Of course, we are in the green brush draw, and we're going to now try to use it to recharge our wellfields or the Arizona water wellfields. But those could be legal challenges and produce costly delays on where you're going to be able to cite this thing and have the outflow. So, and let's look at water. The only real water that'd be available for you drilling a very deep well, there's, there's pumping, there's treatment, there's storage. None of those things are cheap. Now, we're trying to put one bigger tank up Tombstone Canyon that's over a million dollars to put a tank in to increase our fire flow. There are a lot of permitting hurdles, potential legal challenges for environmental groups concerned about drilling in the San Pedro Basin and the Sprinca. So that could create another cone of depression, and it could tie you up for a long time in environmental problems if you start having to drill in that area. So that's another thing to think about utility-wise. Power and gas, I don't know if there's natural gas there, but to heat something with propane would be so much more expensive. You're like a nine iron away from the major substation over at the Bisbee, so you could get all the power you want. APS is actually put in redundant systems so that there's feeding coming from both sides now. So it would be very, you know, hardy about having outages, which would create a problem in a jail. Tombstone doesn't have that, and it's three and a half, four miles away from the closest substation where you could get the power you would need. So all those things are things to think about in costs. And we also have to think about not only those costs, but long-term costs, because the physical bleeding doesn't stop just after construction. To be honest with me, I think you talked about setting up a court over there that would help save. Well, I'll ask Ms. Gilman over there exactly what it takes to set up a court, because we just went through it with our justice court, and it is expensive. And, you know, you're duplicating services that are already available here. You have security, technology, staffing. And then what will you do with your county attorneys? Your county attorneys are all here. Are you going to build them an office over there? Or are they going to be spending back and forth driving? You've got prosecutors, you've got defenders, let alone lost time for judges, jurors, witnesses. And still, no matter what happens, there'll be major felony cases that have to be heard here in the Superior Court. So you're going to be creating a system of redundant travel and expense to come from Tucson back to here. So when you run the numbers, the choice is clear. Maintaining standalone, dedicated utility plants and court facilities versus sharing those costs with an existing municipal system that we have here now is just a no-brainer to think you're going to stand all that up. Finally, I want to just touch on one last thing, which is the human part of it. And I don't think this has been addressed. And so when somebody's released from jail, they don't always have a family there or somebody to pick them up and take them home. They just walk out on the street. And we've worked with the sheriff's office and set up a bus station, a bus stop there for our local bus, where they can be picked up. They get a bus ticket and a few dollars. They can come in town. We have a lot of places that they can get food and some temporary shelter if they need to. They can also get on the Cochise Connection and either go to Douglas or Sierra Vista to go further down the road. Well, just think about what's going to happen in Tombstone. And I'm going to read my little thing here is, they would be released on Highway 80, facing a three-mile walk into town. What services await for them there? And what's their ability to move on? Does the county then become responsible for transporting them, perhaps by court order? Do we simply accept the problem of vulnerably newly released individuals walking along a dangerous state highway? This is not just a logistical problem. It's a question of moral and civil responsibility not to release our prisoners just out onto a state highway to walk someplace. So, but in closing, I, I know what it's like to support the district that you're elected from. For seven years, I was a council member for Ward One, and, and I always stood up for my constituents. But ultimately, we as elected officials must vote what's best for the entire city or county and your, that you serve. The money for this jail doesn't just come from one district. It comes from pockets of citizens all over the county. So I have to say that if someone calls themselves a physical conservative and votes for any location other than Bisbee, I believe they have lost the right to that title, because the costs alone are going to just be two to three to four times more than leaving it here. I thank you for your time and giving me a little extra. And I know the citizens of Bisbee are behind this. They've contacted me. We feel that it's the best location. There's no NIMBYs here that are going to say, we don't want it. It'll just be, be okay with us. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. All right. Next up, we have Kato Daly. Is that right? There you are, Ms. Daly.
Can I just ask a question? It's a little hot in here. Do we have the air on?
We have contacted facilities to turn it down even more. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Daly, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you.
Unless you're like a mayor or something. You're not there. All right, three minutes.
I'm very happy to have Mayor Budge being our Bisbee mayor. Thank you for your, the opportunity to share my opinion and for representing county residents. As a Cochise County taxpayer, from the arguments that I have read and heard in support of keeping the jail in Bisbee, I cannot see any reasonable argument to move the jail location out of its present location. And I'm certainly not going to repeat what Mayor Budge said. He said it very clearly, and I think with a lot of support for his, his reasons to have the jail in Bisbee. So as a taxpayer, I expect that you'll use my money wisely. And by upgrading the present Bisbee jail facility, we can put more of our dollars into that facility rather than create new infrastructure. So thank you for protecting my tax dollars, my safety, and those of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have Steve Paulken. Oh, man, city manager of Bisbee. I recognize the face.
So mayors get forever, and city managers get three minutes.
You get three minutes.
That's my lot in life. I'll tell you, Sharon, I don't know, we don't get no respect. So I want to tell a little bit different kind of tale, because as the mayor mentioned earlier, we just went through the process of deciding and designing and building a new city hall for the citizens of Bisbee after a disastrous fire that burnt the entire building down back in 2017. I say 2017 because that was six years ago. Okay, after that fire, they went through a lot of soul-searching, a lot of meetings, a lot of public input, a lot of stuff to try and decide what and where to do, what they, what, what they wanted to do to rebuild City Hall. That process got my, you know, I'm going to make a very short story here. That process got mired in indecision. Okay? I was, I was not here for the fire. I was here in 2019 for the beginning of the aftermath for a short period of time. And then I came back full-time to the city in 2021. When I returned in 2021, they were exactly the same place they were in 2017, because they couldn't make a decision on what to do. There were a lot of meetings. There was a lot of public input. There was a lot of everything. And I love public input as much as anybody else does. But we are hired to make decisions. Okay? So mirroring this thing in decision did a couple of things. It kept us from having a permanent home for five years, plus the costs went up considerably. The construction cost estimate in 2019 was $2.8 million. The construction contract we just completed was $3.997 million. Okay? That's the cost of indecision. Okay? Only to end up exactly where we started. Okay? Kathleen's been over there several times. Thank you. We appreciate it. And, and of course, you're all invited to come over and take a look at it. I think you'll agree that it was a quality job. It brought forth what we wanted in terms of, of respecting the history of the city of Bisbee, as well as being able to do something that would benefit the people of Bisbee as their house for the next 100 years. And I believe we accomplished that. I tell this tale only because I think that it's something that ought to be considered when deciding how to move forward on a location for this particular project, because of all the reasons that the mayor highlighted, and I will not repeat, but because I think it's the right thing to do for the people of Cochise County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Logan Dodd. Logan Dodd. There you go. Mr. Dodd, you got three minutes, sir.
All right. Evening, board members. Thank you for your public service. I am an employee in Bisbee as well as resident, and I just want to speak in support of keeping the jail where it's at. You can't improve what you don't measure. As Mr. Budge said, you guys had the experts look at it and do all the measurements. Just ask that you take their recommendations and considerations. All the people that are here, I think most in support of keeping it where it is to this day. So I won't repeat a bunch of information that you guys have heard and seen in letters, but I'm asking that you would vote to keep the jail at its current location. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Jim Conlog. I hope I said that right. He's on Microsoft Teams. Are you there, sir?
Yes. And my camera's not working, but that's probably to your advantage. And Chairman Antonori, Supervisor Gomez, Supervisor Cosby, thank you for allowing public input regarding the potential construction of new jail facility. I just have a very, a short point to make. When making your decision regarding the location of a new jail, I urge you to strongly consider the frequency and duration of jail transports associated with the location you select. Those transports involve a considerable expenditure of staff, time, and jail resources, and they can actually become very costly. The courts in our county are doing a good job using interactive audiovisual systems, but that process is limited. In particular, if you looked at Rule 1.5 of the Rules of Criminal Procedure, it limits the use of interactive audiovisual systems in many Superior Court hearings. So having a, having the jail in close proximity to the Superior Court divisions handling criminal cases will substantially reduce the costs and risks related to jail transports. I just wanted to hit that one area. It sounds, I've seen, and it sounds like you've had a lot of other input. So again, thank you very much.
Thanks, Judge. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Ms. Allison, Ms. Allison Morse. Ms. Morse, are you here? Oh, all right. In the back. There you go. No, you got, you're good. You got three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, supervisors, staff, and members of the public. In the interest of time, I will make this brief. Keeping the jail in Bisbee is a no-brainer for all the reasons already put forth. If you want support from voters on November 4th, they'll need to be assured that this is the most prudent and fiscally responsible choice. Utilizing property that is owned by the county where utilities are already in place is ideal. The experts you hired to study the costs and logistics came to the same conclusion as the speakers here today. Keep the jail in Bisbee where it belongs. On another note, Mr. Chairman, I would like to respectfully request that you share with us at the end the number of people who chose not to speak today but submitted a speaker request form in support of the new jail remaining in Bisbee. The number should go on the record and be part of the minutes. The public deserves to know what the response has been to this issue. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Ms. Monica Patience. Good evening. You have three minutes, ma'am.
So I'm talking about in, in support of the jail in Bisbee, and also about the transportation that the mayor spoke about before. I was going to say that the Bisbee bus has nine routes during the week out that way. And then from there, they can take the bus and go to the town in Bisbee, and they can take the Cochise Connection, and it goes three times a day to Sierra Vista or Douglas. I just, that's kind of, it's very important because when they come out, I can tell you a story. When I was at the Lavender Pit a few years ago, that was before they had their buses and everything, I was there and I saw this person coming, very disoriented, and he had blood in his forehead and everything. And we asked him where he was going. He said, well, somebody's going to pick me up. And I said, where are they going to pick you up? Well, he finally, we found out that he was going to be picked up by the Dairy Queen. So he had taken the wrong turn when he was at the traffic circle. So I mean, it's not easy for the inmates when they get out of the prison. They need, they need transportation. They need somewhere to go. And I think that they have the transportation here. It's very important. On top of, of the Cochise Connection and the Bisbee bus, they also have the Cochise College transportation. So there are kind of three different ways they can be transported out of there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Jeff Sturgis, who should be on Microsoft Teams. Mr. Sturgis, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you. And thank you for allowing and encouraging public input on this important decision. I urge the board to vote to keep the jail in Bisbee. It is the only decision that makes sense in so many ways. The cost of relocating to Tombstone poses too great of a burden on taxpayers like me. Common sense and fiscal responsibility should tell us that we county taxpayers do not need this extra financial burden. Bisbee as the county seat and location of the courthouse and other official county offices is a logical location for the jail, allowing efficient organization of the court and law enforcement systems. It just makes sense to keep the jail in Bisbee. Moving the site to Tombstone would be disruptive to the coordination among county services. What is the reasoning behind causing this kind of disruption? Bisbee needs the economic benefits afforded by the jail. Tombstone's businesses and overall economy is focused on tourism, and its infrastructure is not suitable for a large jail complex. It is just rational to keep the jail in Bisbee when considering the needs and capabilities of the two communities. Moving the jail from Bisbee risks losing experienced staff. What is the rationality behind disrupting the established staffing of the jail? The county already owns the land in Bisbee. Why go through the expense of expensive process of purchasing land to build a new facility in Tombstone? Wouldn't that be obviously fiscally irresponsible, be irresponsible, and more or less senseless? Cochise County residents, citizens might want to ask what group of citizens or outside interests are behind promoting the idea that the jail be moved to Tombstone? What is the motive for such promotion? Have the citizens of Cochise County learned enough about what and who is behind this seemingly unreasonable and disruptive notion? Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Oh, God. I apologize in advance. Ms. Zela Baltieras? I hope I said it right.
Yes, hello all. So I, my name is Zela Baltieras. I am the Food Service Director for the county jail, and I worked there about 10 years. I'm also a business owner to Douglas. And I have a full-time job in order to support my business that we're working. I'm also representing here myself, not so much as far as the company I do work for. But I do agree to keep the Bisbee Detention Center at its current location. As we know, there's many aspects that you guys have to decide, the infrastructure, the proximity to the courts, the over-cost efficiency. But as Sheriff Daniels has proposed and mentioned many of the critical aspects, and my biggest support to that, it's the living arrangements that it helps us from the Douglas community. Myself, like others, we live in Douglas, and we do commute to the Bisbee jail every day. And like the mayor said, we'll add 24 minutes to my drive time on a daily basis, back and forth. That's about an hour. So, you know, it does have a big impact on my daily life. So I do propose as well that we keep the county jail at its current location. You know, for many of our Douglas residents that we do work, and we have a, we provide a living from there, and as well as a small business owner that's trying to make it out there in Little Douglas. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
No, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Next up, Ms. Tamara Birch. Tamara? Oh, there.
Good afternoon or evening almost. My name is Tammy Birch, Tamara, and I live here in Bisbee and an active voter. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, the county staff, and all present in person and virtually. We are here to voice our concerns and opinions on where the new county jail would be located. Our common goal is to decide which site will be the most fiscally, financially, and cost-efficient. What is the best use of our tax dollars? Not only is the money a vital consideration, but so is the safety, the security, and the health and well-being of the staff and the inmates. An important consideration is time. Time to order materials, to construct the facilities, they are crucial. We've wasted a lot of time right now. We must meet necessary codes and permits that will be required. The study group recommended three places. Two of them are in Bisbee of the six sites, and one in Tombstone. I believe the group recommended the Bisbee site. My first choice is the present site. I've also talked to the sheriff and the staff, and they two believe that the present site is the best one. The land is paid for. There may be a small portion that might have to be purchased. I don't know really exactly about that, possibly from Freeport-McMaron. See the site map if any questions. Clearly, there's utilities, water, and sewage already here, which are expensive. The electric and gas are in place. The access to the courts, the transportation costs, and time, they've already been budgeted in our known force. Wilcox and Sierra Vista have booking stations. The proximity means communities will save time and will be convenient for families, inmates, and judicial procedures. Tombstone site would be incredibly costly. Time to gather permits, you must purchase the land, which takes some time, and that delay would cause needless harm to the staff and the inmates. The development of the sewage plant, water lines, availability of utility roads, finally, construction would be arduous. A definite no to the Tombstone site. The second choice in Bisbee, well, you'd have to bill there, so that'd also be more costly. Time is important. Any delays would increase stress in the continued crowded and unhealthy conditions and environment for staff and living conditions, and the mental health of the staff and the inmates should be considered. Let's choose the healthiest, most efficient cost option. Thank you for considering my point of view. I'm not an engineer, but I know about time and money.
Thank you, ma'am. Pretty good. All right, next up is Ms. Cinda Combs.
Thank you and good afternoon. From everything I've read, it seems clear that the only reasonable and fiscally responsible choice is for the new jail to be built in Bisbee. To review all of the substantiating evidence, please reread your letter from Mayor Kenneth Budge. I trust that you will decide in the best, practical, and financial interest of the citizens of Cochise County. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Steve Helfrich, who's online. Mr. Helfrich, are you there? Mr. Helfrich?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Helfrich. My architecture office is named Studio Architecture. I have 30, I'm a registered architect. I have 30 years of experience in remodel and fixing up old commercial buildings. On the 12th of May, 2023, I toured the jail with Commander Bradshaw. After that tour, I wrote him a letter with about 20 recommendations on what you could do to remodel and expand the existing facility. And I believe that you should seriously consider redesigning and expanding the existing facility and putting the money that we save into programming and transportation. I'm available to talk about my concerns at any time. Thank you very much.
And next, we're going to take any inputs from the sheriff's office. So Commander Bradshaw, are you going to be the guy? All right, Mr. Bradshaw, Commander Bradshaw. You got three-ish minutes. I'll give you a little slack like the beer since you're representing sheriff's office, and you guys got a big part in this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sheriff sends his apology this evening that he had a previous commitment out of county. He's had that scheduled for quite some time, and as you guys know, this meeting was just scheduled last week, so he apologizes for that. I just want to point out a couple of facts and try and keep opinions out of it. Arizona Revised Statute Title 11, Chapter 3, Article 2 states that the sheriff shall take charge of and keep the county jail, including a county jail, under the jurisdiction of a county jail district and the prisoners in the county jail. You've already heard about all the utilities that we currently pay and where we're located. What I want to point out is that 45% of our current employees, that are county employees, currently reside in Douglas. And that doesn't include contractors like Ms. Baltieras that you just heard from. We do over 4,000 transports a year, and over three-quarters of those are to the courts. Adding 20 minutes to all of those transports would be extremely expensive. You all have the letter from the sheriff, which points out what a lot have been said today by the public, and most of the people here have a copy of that letter. So we ask that our opinion as the sheriff's office is that we should keep it where it currently is and its location. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, sir. All right, next up, oh, well, these are people that are asking not to speak but would like to have their name read into the record. We have Ms. Christine Rhodes, who has signed in in support of the jail site staying in Bisbee. Mr. John T. Viverto has also signed in in support of the jail staying in Bisbee. Ms. Susan Gale Sanders, also in support of the jail in Bisbee. Jennifer Druckman, signed in in support of the jail in Bisbee. Ronnie Mestasiscondos, I hope I said that right, sir, has signed, or madam, I'm sorry, if I misgendered you because I can't tell whether Ronnie's he or she these days. My middle name is Ronald, by the way, so that's what threw me off. So they are also signed in in support of the jail staying in Bisbee. Ms. Donna Lamar, also signing in in support of the jail in Bisbee. So to answer the question of the lady that spoke earlier, we had 13 speakers tonight that were in person or on Teams in support of the jail in Bisbee. We had six individuals provide written support of the jail but not requesting to speak of the jail in Bisbee. And then we have 13 other individuals that signed in anonymously, also supporting the jail in Bisbee. So I don't know, somebody break the calculator out. So 26, 32, 32 total in support of the jail in Bisbee. So at this time, what I'm going to do, I don't see any other requests to speak. I'm going to allow my colleagues to offer a closing statement. Mr. Crosby, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I believe it can be said that I didn't campaign for or against the jail tax in 2023, although I was certainly critical of the actions of the Board of Supervisors and the election. That's why the new board reversed the position of the previous board and settled with Mr. Pochance. When I took office, I told the sheriff that I was willing to put the issue before the voters. But there was a lot of people that were dissatisfied with the election, unfortunately. The Chin Study recommended a price of a little under $200 million. The cost neighborhood we are now looking at is much lower in the range of more or less $120 million. That makes the $200 million Dream Justice Center extremely unlikely to occur, in my opinion. So looking at the number-two agenda item, I wonder if my colleagues or anybody else, when they say "current location", is that what they mean on Judd Drive? Madam Gomez, is that what you mean?
I believe that that is, yes. It's in, maybe Commander Bradshaw could just confirm it, but it is at that location, and I believe it is west, am I correct, sir, to where the jail is now?
Okay.
Is that right?
I wanted to make sure it wasn't a mile down the hill east, because that was what somebody thought. Thank you, Commander. So that concludes my remarks.
Okay, all right, Ms. Gomez, over to you.
Okay, well, first of all, you know, I believe, A, we have to all vote for a new jail, period, right? If we don't, I toward it, there are so many things that would cause such liability issues to us that it's rather scary. I pray every night that nothing happens to those that work at the jail and those who are the inmates. 66% of those inmates have mental health issues. So you're right, putting them out in Tombstone where they don't have any infrastructure, you know, as far as human infrastructure, is really something that I can't see us doing. 46% of the staff that is in the jail are from Douglas. Putting it anywhere else in Tombstone is going to add an hour to everyone's commute, and that is going to be critical. I mean, this workforce is trained. Yeah, they've been working there to have to, and I would assume that there would be people who would look for another job because that's a lot of time that takes away from their, you know, from a balance of life, right? I hope that we all in Bisbee, because I know that Bisbee, the precincts, didn't vote for the jail, that you do vote for it. Now, let's talk about the site. I believe that to put things closer to Sierra Vista is really an error. We don't know that Fort Huachuca is always going to be there. There's a lot of talk of a lot of programs being eliminated possibly in this administration. So to put all of your eggs in one basket in a location just doesn't make any sense to me. Bisbee has been the county seat for, I don't know, probably at least 80 years, if not more.
1929, I believe.
Okay, so, but I can't do the math, but it's a long time nevertheless. And it's got the historical issue to it. I mean, Bisbee is a county seat, has been. Part of the population is also considered in their census. So there are so many issues. I don't want to repeat the infrastructure, the workforce. But I just believe that in a county of Cochise, we have to respect the fact that Bisbee has been the county seat. I do not want to see that moved. I think I've told you before, I wanted to die on this sword, that I believe the jail has to be in Bisbee for all the reasons that everyone spoke about and just because that is the way it is, and that's the way it should continue to be. And there's no reason, if we want to call ourselves fiscal conservatives, I agree with the mayor, we can't do that if we extend the time and the cost because of putting a dot in the central part of the county. That just is not enough reason to disrupt everything that it would do, and the impact it would have across the board is just, it's huge. So I believe strongly that we have to have this jail and that we have to have it in Bisbee. So that is, you know, is my conclusion. I talked about this, I've been very passionate about it, as you know, both my Supervisor Crosby and Antonori, and I believe that this is what has to happen. So I implore you to please reconsider thinking of voting for any other location and to do the right thing and vote for the jail in Bisbee. Thank you.
Gomez Fan Club is here. All right, so for my comments, I'm a data-driven guy. I spent the last 21 years of my life in a business where every nickel, every dime counts, and it means the difference between winning and losing a contract and probably 200 to 450 jobs if you don't get that contract. So I'm very cognizant of costs, and I'm very cognizant of legacy costs, for downstream costs of what stuff costs. This jail decision is not a spur-of-the-moment decision. This is a 50-plus-year decision. After pretty much everybody in this room is gone, with the exception of some of the younger folks in the back, there will be people, including my sons and grandsons, if I get one one of these days, that are going to, they're going to be making that decision. So I don't go lightly, and I don't use emotion or gut feelings to make decisions. I just don't. So I want to see, and I'm still asking for it, and I've asked for the detailed cost-benefit analysis, which I haven't seen yet. That decision may drive me towards looking at putting the jail in Bisbee. It may drive it somewhere else in Bisbee, not necessarily down here. Maybe it goes across the street here, who knows? But I haven't seen that detailed cost-benefit analysis. So a lot of the data that, again, I saw from the Chin Group was just sort of rudimentary estimate of a lot of that stuff. And that's why in the last working session, I requested that I get the siding, utility sightings and associated costs associated with that, land acquisition costs, there's opportunities using state trust land, using getting a 50- to 100-year lease from state trust land rather than having to buy land. There's the Phelps Dodge property that was discussed about a potential site. There's numerous other options out there, and I don't think they've been fully explored. That's not to say that the outcome may not be the same. And to, again, what the city manager said, we have time. All right, so we have an election that's going to be in November. We can't really do any firm obligation until we've secured a bond to pay for the construction cost, because we are not going to put construction companies on the hook and have them spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a bid and proposal, and then pull the rug out from them at the last minute and tell them, oh, we didn't get the bond, so we're not going to build the jail. So it's critical that the focus is on this election in November and that the voters approve the sales tax that's going to pay for the bond that is going to build, cover the cost to build this jail. In the meantime, we will be leaning forward as a board to ensure that we do choose the most cost-effective and best taxpayer-friendly location to build this jail. And it may be in Bisbee, it will likely be in Bisbee, but it may be somewhere else in Bisbee.
Could you repeat those words?
Yeah, 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 I got you.
Yeah, yeah, I can repeat them. They most likely will be.
I didn't see the actual, again, I hate making emotional.
This is not emotional.
No, it is, it is unless I see the numbers, and that's all I'm getting at. So when I see the numbers, I may, I may change. I just do want to say, some of the comments, there is no conspiracy tinfoil hat outside special interest group that is talking about putting the jail in Tombstone. So I don't know where that came from.
I'd like to notice, too, that nobody from Tombstone came to this meeting to ask where to be there.
Okay, all right, all right. So again, that's the aspect. I just also want to point out that the vast majority of the people that voted against the jail district were not from Sierra Vista or Tombstone. So you got to take that into consideration. Pretty much everybody else voted no. All right, so keep that in the back of your mind. So, and I spoke with your colleague from Wilcox and your colleagues from Benson, and there's an influence there that may change if the jail was closer to those two municipalities, that may change the outcome of that election, that you have to consider. All right, so those voters get a vote, too. They may not be here right now, physically speaking, because it's an hour and a half away to Wilcox. But I do know that that may also influence their vote come November, in this November election. And if you don't get a positive vote, you don't get a jail. I mean, it's that, it's that simple. This decision will be mute.
Well, Benson is just part of Tucson, so you know, as far as I'm concerned. At Wilcox, at Wilcox.
You just got a bunch of people wound up.
That's okay.
Sure you get.
That's okay when this comes to the jail, but anyway, thank you.
But I got you. Anyways, I want to just make that point. Before we finalize any construction, there's going to be several dominoes that need to fall. We're hiring our buyer's agent here in a week. We're going to begin doing the architectural analysis. We're going to be doing the site planning and the site analysis. All those things are put into play. All of that will be done before we go to the ballot, so that we hope to have a cost estimate of what it will cost to build this jail in the publicity pamphlet. So we are moving very quickly to get that data so the voters can make an informed decision when they vote in November. That will have an impact on how much money we borrow in the bond and how quickly we can pay the bond off. And how quickly we pay the bond off relates to how quickly the tax goes away. And again, all municipalities out there will tell you that that half-cent sales tax, uh, does have an impact economically, and especially for Benson and Wilcox, uh, where they tend to go drive somewhere else to go shopping to save a few bucks because the line is right there, and it does have an impact on them economically.
Just imagine Douglas, who has probably the highest sales tax, still, you know,
It is.
Forty-six percent of them work in that jail.
It is an impact. So like I said originally, this is a fifty-year decision, and we have to consciously take in and make decision based on where the data, data. I'm not gonna debate.
Yeah, no, I know you're not gonna debate.
I'm not gonna debate.
I'd just like to add one more word in that the county seat is something that I don't know how you use data to decide what's best for the county seat, but it's been here in Bisbee, so I don't want to debate with you either.
But it was in Tombstone for fifty years before Phelps Dodge.
But Tombstone was also like, you know, it's twelve hundred people right now.
I'm just saying.
Their infrastructure.
We're debating. We are debating. I was gonna give, give, I, I'll tell you what, I will give you the closing argument before, before we go. But again, but again, um, back to what I was saying, I will, I will reserve final judgment until I get the data that I requested from, uh, Phil and, and the engineers with regard to where the best place may be. And I, I mean, it may be over here, it may be over there, it may be, you know, further up eighty, I don't know, but I'm just saying that I am not convinced that we've gotten all the information that we need to make a good fiscally conservative decision on where, where this, this jail should go. But, uh, I appreciate the public's input. Uh, don't get me wrong, and I do take that into consideration, and I will take that into consideration. Um, and I've already taken it into consideration. Uh, but I just want to say, lastly, that we will do what we believe as a board is best for the taxpayers of Cochise County because they're paying the bill for this jail, and they will pay that bill over the next ten to twelve years. Um, and then their kids and grandkids will deal with the outcome of where and what goes into that jail. Because the last thing I want to do is have my sons have to deal with having to build a new jail twenty-five years from now because it wasn't put in the right spot, or the ground starts to cave and subside and crack, and because we didn't pick the right spot. So that's the, that's all. That's all I'm getting for it. So with that, I will, I will let Ms. Gomez, since it's her turf.
We got another agenda item.
Close, close, close on agenda item number one, yeah.
Okay, so, um, again, I believe the jail needs to be in Bisbee, and, and it's not just about data. It's about the human factor, their families, having the county seat stay in Bisbee. Again, I just don't believe that, that data is the only reason you make a decision, and, and we disagree on that. And I respect your, your, um, your, your belief system. I want to thank everybody for coming out. It makes a big difference to hear from you all, um, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much for attending. Thank the mayor and the city, the city manager, and also Commander Bradshaw and all the constituents. So, um, I guess then we will move on to item two, but again, thank you. Um, do not, you know, keep your letters coming in, keep your emails coming in, keep your voice being heard because that's what it's all about. So thank you very much.
All right. With that, uh, can I get a motion to consider agenda item number two, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the selection of the existing jail site located at two oh three North Judd Drive, Bisbee, Arizona eight five six oh three, as official location for construction of the new county jail facility.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crosby.
Um, I'm not passionate about this, and I try not to be passionate about this job, and I am definitely more of the data-driven kind of guy. However, sometimes you let your sister have her way, and, uh, that's what I've said from the beginning. Uh, and if the jail tax election fails, the location will be where? The current location. And so there it is. It's item number two, says it's on Judd, Judd Drive. And, uh, I, I, like, like I'll repeat, when taking office, I told the sheriff I was willing to put the issue before the voters, and that's how I feel about it. So I am not adamant that it's gonna pass. I'm not adamant that it's not gonna pass. I'll let the voters decide if they want it or not. The last time it was too close to call, in my opinion, with the, uh, with the issue of the ten thou, ten to eleven thousand people disenfranchised or not getting their pamphlets or whatever the case may be. So I still hold that position, let the voters decide. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Ms. Gomez.
Well, you know, I can't repeat anymore of what I've said in so many different work sessions and tonight. Um, I believe we have to listen to the people. We have to have common sense about this and be cost-effective, and therefore I'm ready for a vote.
All right. I would like to consider the actual site location, uh, a little bit further. Whether it's gonna be off of two oh three North Judd Drive, whether it's gonna be off of Melody Lane, whether it's gonna be off of, uh, some other location, um, I just haven't, in my opinion, seen sufficient financial legacy costs, logistical costs, infrastructure costs related to those sites, including site prep. I physically went over and stood over there, and there are costs, hidden costs, I do not believe were being, uh, calculated.
Are you sure you have the right place?
I, I got you. It's hard to miss. Um, so I think there's, there's some costs we gotta look at that have not been considered. That's all I'm saying. And if I were to pick between two sites, I'd pick this one over here versus over there because of the, just the site prep alone that would, would go into putting a jail in rather than tucked up in the hills, uh, over on that, that side over there. Uh, but with that, um, that's, that's my two cents.
I, I have a question for the recorder and our administrator. Either or both. When does the pamphlet have to be mailed out?
I don't have a calendar in front of me right now. I, if you give me a moment, I can look it up.
Is it soon or, or is it?
I believe they mail them, they mail them out in, uh, September, late September. So they print them in early, mid to early September, so we probably have to have it done, I'm gonna guess, in late August to get it to the, to run back.
The point being, I think that the more information, the more accurate information that's in the pamphlet, the, the better everything's gonna be. You can't just say, oh, we're gonna put it, we're gonna put it someplace, so we gotta, we gotta decide, obviously.
Yeah, I would, I would.
The, the cost and the location, I think people, they, they're gonna wanna know.
So I would, I would like to table agenda item number two until we finish that work session with order, please. I would like to table that until we have an additional work session with, with, with our project manager and the site engineer to evaluate the, the associated costs with that, and then make the decision after we have that meeting, and that we should schedule that meeting as soon as possible, um, within a week or so, uh, to have that discussion. But that's, that's my motion. Do I have a second? No?
Nope.
No? All right. Well, that's the way it works. So with that, uh, the motion before the board is to approve the selection of the existing jail site location at two oh three North Judd Drive in Bisbee. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. So motion passes two to one. So that's where we go from here. So with that, any last-minute discussion?
I want to thank Supervisor Antonori for holding this public session. And even though we all have a difference of opinion, what's most important is that we all respect each other and, you know, understand that we're all doing the best job that we can and with the belief system that we have. So I respect the fact that you had this meeting, and thank you very much. And thank you, Supervisor Crosby.
Likewise, Mr. Antonori.
All right. Uh, so with that, uh, the next meeting is going to be Monday, oh, Tuesday.
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 July fifteenth at nine AM, uh, for a work session in the hearing room to discuss committee appointments for the Board of Supervisors and the executive staff. So with that, we are adjourned.